I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on Monday, December 19th at 7:02 PM. May I ask everyone to join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for personnel pursuant 1-200? I don't have to say all that right? No. Okay. May I have a motion to go into executive make? Sarah Seconds, all in favor? Thank you. May I have a motion to go back into regular session? Mic moves. Sarah Seconds, all in favor? Okay, we've thanked our visitors for your patience tonight. I'm going to ask the board if we can change the order a little bit of our agenda so that we can keep moving while our technical people are hard at work. All in favor? Okay. So, we're going to start with the first selectman's report. The Park and Rec Department hosted, excuse me, an old-fashioned Christmas on December 10th at Tilly Pond Park. And the event has taken place for a few years now, and every year it seems to grow. This year, there were more children than ever. It was just really terrific to see. A circle of light holiday celebration was held at the Darien Senior Center on Wednesday, and it was a terrific time for the seniors to gather and sing carols. And we had a lot of people from Town Hall and from the Police Department there to help with the serving and with some of the singing, looking at you Chief Anderson. So, it was really nice. Tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, so I want to wish everybody celebrating a very happy Hanukkah. And the second annual menorah lighting ceremony will be held this Wednesday, the 21st, at 6 o'clock in Grove Street Plaza. The event will be led by clergy from Temple Shalom in Norwalk, and songs from the members of the Middle Sex Choir will be sung. The lighting at the menorah at Grove Street will take place each night through Hanukkah through, I'm sorry, for Hanukkah through December 25th at 6 o'clock. So, each night up until December 25th, it'll be at Grove Street at 6 o'clock. At Home in Darien's annual meeting was held at the Darien Library on December 6th. The new Executive Director, Chris Jones, hosted a panel discussion on aging in Darien and the ways that At Home in Darien and the town plan programs to support our senior citizens. This past Saturday, I had the honor of participating with some of my other fellow Board of Selectmen in Darien's Wreaths Across America ceremony. So, J.C. Carter, Captain Carter, organized this event, and I thank him. During this busy time of year, it was really heartwarming to see so many residents turn out to pay their respects to those that have served or continue to serve our country. With the arrival of colder temperature, the Darien and the Newroton train stations are now open for extended hours. They are open Monday through Friday from 4:55 a.m. to 7 o'clock p.m., and from 9 to 7 on the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays. So, the station house will be open, the bathrooms will be available, and we're hoping people can stay warm while they're going into the city. Planning continues for the Palmer property adjacent to Federal, and we expect a very positive report from them in the very near future. I'd like to thank Palmers for allowing the Senior Men's Association to collect donations for the Darien Human Services Department. Over a three-day period, $3,640 was raised. So, a big thank you to Frank DeLeo for organizing the bell ringers and for all of our residents for their continued generosity. It's very, 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 very appreciated. And finally, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and a new year filled with health and joy for all of you and for your families or your loved ones. That's my report. Next, we are going to go to Kate. Kate, do you have anything?
Just briefly, we are knee-deep in budgets. I'm beginning my review, actually started it tonight. And then, over the next few weeks, we'll be meeting with various department heads and commissions going through their budget requests. That will be keeping us busy for a while.
Okay. And we'll do committee reports really quickly. Is on reports, Mike?
Okay, well, nothing says the holiday season more than the Light Review Board, but we did meet last Wednesday.
So right.
And we have nine properties on the list, eight of which are active. Five of them are in stages where fines are accruing. Three are, we're keeping an eye on, they're rapidly approaching the fine stage. And as we touched on last night, there's one property that there is agreement to knock down, there's been signs posted in their notice period, so we expect that property that we spoke of last time will be removed in the next month or so. But everyone's in agreement, and that should move forward rather rapidly.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Sarah?
The Thriving is Task Force has not met since our last meeting, and they will be meeting again in January. And the Henley Homes Royal, Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee will be meeting Wednesday night, at which point they will be looking at the presentation by the architect and the construction firm on the design development drawing and estimates. So, we're looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you.
IT Committee met last Thursday. We conducted a survey of town officials and town employees about what they'd like to see improved in terms of IT. We just got those survey results, we're reviewing those at our next meeting, and I'll report on those when we talk next. The department heads have also been asked about sort of the one or two top ideas that they would like to change, and we'll be able to report a summary of that also at the next meeting. And the last topic our committee's going to be looking at is outsourcing, and that committee's still meeting, and I expect actually to have recommendations from them very shortly.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
Sure. Oxbridge Building Committee met on Wednesday via Zoom. The Assembly Wing, which is pretty exciting, is in full motion. It's about 45% complete right now, so if you go on campus, you will see this giant structure, and it gives you kind of a better feel for how the layout of that property is going to be, which is pretty exciting. They have a completion date, which should be May 31st, so the very end of the school year. And then, throughout the summer, they'll be moving because currently, right now, they're using some makeshift property inside to have the ELP and the cafeteria. They'll do all of that construction, the internal construction of the new building, open that up so that everybody should be in the new building for start of school, maybe next year, at 100%. That's very exciting. We did our new schedule. Usually, we meet on Wednesdays, every second Wednesday of the month. And going forward, as of the new year, we'll be meeting on Thursdays. For those who tune in, I would say, you know, take a look at your schedule to make sure that you make that adjustment. And I also want to say a huge thank you for Randy Geraldo. Him and his family are going to be moving out of Darien across the ocean, so he served a tremendous amount of time and work on the Oxbridge Building Committee, and this has been its last meeting. So, we are incredibly grateful for all the work that he's done and wish his family the best on their new venture. QPR training in terms of the Mental Health Task Force was originally set for back in November, and unfortunately, the facilitator was not able to make it due to an illness, so they've rescheduled that, which is a great opportunity for those who have not done this training. What it is, it's QPR, which stands for Question, Persuade, and Review, Refer. It's a method to help train laymen to recognize when somebody is in distress and possibly in suicidal ideation. So, that is going to be changed to January 10th from 7:00 to 8:30 via Zoom. If you're interested in taking that class, it's open to anybody in the town of Darien. You could just RSVP to Ally Ramsack, and she will sign you up, and you'll get a link for it, and you can sit at your home and do some QPR training.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow, I didn't know that. Okay, terrific. Okay. So, Kate, I think we'll wait on public comment, right? We'll go right to, okay. So, the next item on the agenda, we're going to go back to number one, which is an update from the Peritree Building Committee. And I thank all of you for being here tonight, but I think, Mike, you're going to lead off?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is, Mike, are you still chair, official chair? You're still official chair?
Yes. Co-chair. So, first off, I'm Mike Scrow, and thank you guys for having us this evening. I'm here with my co-chair, Randy Tankus, also Lori Bora, Chair of Parks and Rec Commission. And we're also joined by Craig Flaherty, Redness and Mead, and Dan Diggs, who's hiding out somewhere behind us with Weston and Sampson. And those guys can give you a better introduction of their credentials and when they come up. But I thought before I turned it over to them, so we're here to give an update on, I think, what we feel is a very important milestone for the Petri Beach Improvement Project. And I thought maybe before we, once again, I turn it over to these guys, it may be helpful for you to, for me to give you a little bit of a background. So, first off, the Building Committee has been in place now for, we just, not too long ago, passed our fourth anniversary, believe it or not. Probably a little long historically for a Building Committee. And the Building Committee was formed really in follow-on to work that was conducted by the Parks and Rec Commission and the master plan that was created by the Parks and Rec Commission back in 2017, and it was published in 2018. And that master plan essentially reviewed the state of all of the parks throughout the town of Darien and called out recommendations for improvements throughout all of our parks and beaches. And the Commission then proceeded from that and essentially set a priority list of parks to really follow up on for improvements, and Petri worked its way to the top of that list. That was done through a vote, I guess, mid-2018. And then, the Building Committee was formed by the first selectman in October of 2018. And so, you know, and that, you know, with that, the charge of the Building Committee was essentially to focus on the recommendations that came out of that master plan. And those essentially fell into two categories, what I'm referring to is two tracks. One was around the building, the concession and the bathhouse and the toilets that are there. And then, the other centered around improvements to the site, what I'm referring to as the site, which is essentially the footprint of the beach itself. And those site infrastructure elements were specifically called out in the charge first. There's a little bit broader range of those, but as they were articulated in the charge, it was to improve accessibility to park facilities, regrade the parking lot to correct drainage issues and reduce flooding issues, improve beach resiliency and reduce wind and water erosion by increasing natural shoreline areas, reconstruct the boat ramp, enhance ADA accessibility across the footprint of the park, but specifically to the dock as well, and then to replace the guard shack. That last item on the list had been completed through the course of what we were doing over the course of the couple of years. To do the work that we felt we were charged with, we engaged the help of some experts and consultants. We brought on an architectural firm, Neil Hawke Associates, to focus on evaluating the state of the existing buildings and provide some recommendations for enhancements and possibly a replacement for the buildings. And then Weston and Sampson specifically to focus on the site improvements, as well as work around the buildings to the extent that that would be necessary. Once we got ourselves into it a little more deeply, we understood that there were some more sophisticated issues that we had to really kind of come to an understanding of, and that's when we reached out to Redness and Mead and brought Craig's team on board to help us in the area of coastal resiliency and to better understand the dynamics that were impacting on the beach itself. And similarly, Race, a firm called Race Coastal Engineering, some of you may know Race. Race was also brought in at the time that the Newroton Boat Club was rebuilt after Sandy. So, and these are firms that were local, have a very deep understanding of kind of the, you know, the conditions in the area, and also, you know, a long history of working on projects of similar sophistication and complexity. And then, you know, of course, throughout the, specifically 18 months, I'll go into chronology a little bit more in a moment, but specifically throughout the period that we were active, there was a tremendous amount of consultation and coordination with whoever we ultimately needed to work with. So, more specifically, Connecticut Deep, FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, EPA, and then various agencies throughout the town, Parks and Rec, of course, planning and zoning, the Assessors Office, Building Department, Public Works, and the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters, and a great deal of coordination as well with the Darien Boat Club throughout. And just to touch on chronology for a moment, because I think that just maybe helped to set some further context. So, as I mentioned, you know, the Building Committee was formed in October of 2018, and we were active for roughly 18 months. And over that period of 18 months, we met probably 30 times in public sessions, and that's separate from whatever other meetings that took place and coordinating offline to do the homework and the work that was required. And on March 4th, so kind of culminating towards the end of that 18-month period, on March 4th of 2020, we, based upon all the work that had been done and all of what we had learned throughout, the Building Committee authorized Weston and Sampson to move forward with an application referred to as a COP or Certificate of Permission to allow us to move forward with the improvements that had been articulated and defined for the site itself, separate from the building. So, the building is excluded from what we'll discuss this evening. And so, you know, we're all familiar with where we were in 2020, kind of, you know, COVID was starting to emerge as an even more serious situation. And at that point in time, Jamie reached out to myself and Lori as Chair of Parks and Recs and made the recommendation, the suggestion to us that maybe, given everything that was going on around us and kind of the unknown in terms of the longevity of the COVID situation and maybe other considerations, she had asked that we put the work of the Building Committee on hold until we'd gotten past what we're all working through with COVID. We met, I put that recommendation to Parks and Recs, and of course, we agreed that that made sense to us, with one exception. And once again, we had an agreement from Jamie that this made sense to us as well, and that exception was to continue to move forward with the application to Connecticut Deep for the Certificate of Permission to ultimately make the improvements to the infrastructure, the site infrastructure that we had called out. And finally, on, in May of that year, so once again, just kind of back-to-back, one month after another, in May of that year, we held our last meeting. And so, between that period of May and October of this year, that application for the Certificate of Permission, which Dan will go through in some further detail, was working its way through the state, through the Army Corps, through various different hurdles and gates that we had to go through. And in October of this year, we were granted the permit or the permission to move forward with those improvements. And once again, from my perspective, I feel it's a tremendously important milestone. It's unique in a number of different regards that these guys will go into further. And, you know, I think with that now, maybe, having set some context, I'll turn it over to Dan. And I'm guessing there's probably, you know, some very important questions around maybe timeline and costs. I would suggest we'll go through what Dan and Craig will walk us through, and then make a little circle back around and see how we maybe touch on that for you guys as well.
Anybody, since we're down to one model, if you want to see, feel free to bring a chair up on the side.
Thanks, Mike.
As Mike mentioned, I'm Dan Diggs. I'm Alenski Varkic with Weston Sampson. I've been working in town now for many years, maybe eight years at this point on various park projects, and it's nice to see we're at a milestone point in Peritree Beach. As Mike mentioned, it took us a while to get to this point, but there's a couple of things that we worked through that's really clear as what's included was not in the COP, which took a decent amount of effort during that thing in COVID, right? So, imagine every federal agency, state agency we worked with was now virtual as of middle of March, and working through home phone lines and other communications with them was kind of some hurdles along the way. So, our charge really was to look at the priorities for this project was really to protect, use, and maintain the natural quality of the beach and park, improve beach resiliency and reduce wind-water erosion, as Mike mentioned. As you can see here in the 2020 photo, reduce the dispersion of sand during events onto the parking areas, but also to look at how do we make this site sustainable for the future. So, from a parking lot standpoint, how do we raise a parking lot to a level that reduces that erosion, protects it as a resource, and also to repair the boat lots that has had issues over the years due to the pitch of the ramp. So, as we're moving forward, the COP includes a couple of things that historically had not been permitted for the town. The first of which was a Darien Boat Club building. That was just a relic of the times in the past that was never actually permitted, so they actually asked us to permit that as a part of this project. So, that's been permitted. They did allow us to reconstruct and modify the parking lot. That includes a reduction of the parking areas, lose about 31 stalls, but that's a reduction of the overall asphalt area within the zone that's permitted by the deep. We also were to add, is removal of the asphalt to add more beach areas. So, when you pull into their car, you're not nosing right where people put their beach towels anymore. A little more zone between the nose of the car and where the water comes off of normal tides. The third item, as I mentioned, is reconstruction of the boat ramp. Fourth, dredging of the channel and also where the boat ramp is. So, due to maximize our effort for this permitting process, I'll show you the areas that we had permitted, not only at the base of the boat ramp, but out to the channel around the Darien Boat Club slip areas. And finally, restoration of the tidal wetland. There's one spot that has been there for a number of years. It's been slowly degrading due to a number of storms, so looking to restore that. And this permission, or permit, we want to call it, is valid for five years. So, it's important to know that when it gets to year five, if not made any improvements, we need to apply for extension. And we would like to see improvements within that time period, but the state also knows we can't do other reasons. We can work through that process with them. So, the components, as I mentioned, parking lots, the main area here that most can relate to. The boat ramp here on right-hand side, the channel dredging is not only here at the base of the boat ramp itself, but out around the slips into this general vicinity. The wetland area is here, just off of where the current bathhouse restroom area is. And then also, the picnic area was part of the parking lot reconstruction. So, while we're looking at these components, the state really saw this as...
Sorry to interrupt. Just a quick question. So, the 31 parking spots that you're taking out, what percentage reduction is that in parking? And did you study sort of usage of the beach and parking intensity to determine that that was actually okay and that these were in fact surplus spots, or are you creating an issue by taking out parking?
So, I don't believe we did a, this is a formal study, I could say. There was some review of actual counts. During this process, we actually did some traffic counts in the area, if you remember by the front day agency.
Well, we did, we did a couple of things. Having not done a formal traffic study, but what we did do is we did some informal, I guess, counting on at least one holiday, July 4th of 2019. We were out from 8:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. at night, did some counts. At no point, and those numbers are documented, they're posted on the web, at no point during that day were there stalls that were not available. So, at no point during that day were folks turned away because they couldn't have, there were no parking spaces. What Jamie had also separately coordinated on our behalf was the collaboration with WestCog. And we had, we had access to some WestCog staff. They brought in a camera, they posted a camera, and this was tail end of 2019. They posted a camera at the entrance, once again, the tail end of the summer season. And at least on one weekend, they were able to collect counts of cars in and out and did some analysis on that. We were working our way up to doing a similar thing, similar analysis, capture and analysis on Labor Day weekend, and then the camera got stolen, interestingly enough. So, we were not able to complete that analysis, and it would have been great to have the data, the actual data for, you know, of course, for Labor Day. So, it's a piece that has not been, I would say, officially or formally conducted. There's really, I don't think there was any indication, although I'm sure that folks will differ with me, but, you know, certainly throughout that period, I was spending a tremendous amount of time at the beach from early in the morning through late in the evening, many weekends. I never kind of experienced a period of time where folks were not able to park on any of those. But once again, I acknowledge that's purely informal anecdotal evidence, so I think it's a good point, John, that it's something that we might want to take a tougher...
So, there's still enough room for parents to teach their kids how to park the car on the lots? Not that I ever did that.
Yeah. We may want to take a closer look at that. I mean, the other, the other side of this is that, as Dan's pointing out, the benefit that accrues from that is that we're adding, so we refer to the area here that Dan's kind of pointing to as the West Beach, and we're adding 18 feet of additional beach onto the West Beach. So, Craig has a number of slides that'll kind of point this out more specifically, but that West Beach is kind of essentially at an astronomical high tide. Now, we could be talking about midday, sunny day, midday, you know, at astronomical high tide, when that beach is almost gone, because it's a kind of a narrow, it's a narrow beach. And when that, you know, when we're in the midst of these astronomical high tides or other types of high tides, you know, the water is almost washing right up against the curb line. So, part of what we're factoring in here is to expand that beach now, of course, we're swapping beach for parking lot, but we're expanding the beach by 18 feet. So, we're making that deeper by 18 feet. Once again, I know you didn't ask me this, but in my view, I think very few municipalities in the world have an opportunity to build beach nowadays. So, an aspect of what we're doing here is actually adding to the beach at Petri Point Beach.
Okay. Thank you.
Petri actually has more parking spaces than the beach presently.
Okay, so, a couple of things. So, let's, I think maybe let's let Dan go through his presentation.
Sorry.
But also, the camera can't, people that are at home, they can't hear your question, so we're going to ask you if you're going to speak to come up to the podium, because otherwise the people will want to watch this video, and it'll be really hard to follow. So, go ahead, Dan.
So, as mentioned, we did have a net loss reduction of parking stalls, mostly on this west side, as Mike mentioned here, which adds additional space for additional beach area or vegetation, low vegetation area. And we'll talk further about some benefits of that here in a couple of slides. A couple of things that, sorry, to point out, from a technical standpoint, a couple of the elevations that are worthwhile noting, as you pull into the beach currently, you can go straight towards that West Beach. So, you're pulling in here, going straight towards West Beach, there is a catch basin there. And if you've been there during any storm of any event, or even sometimes a high tide, that catch basin actually is where most of the localized flooding occurs. It's very low. It's actually at elevation 4.2. And just for perspective, the elevation that this state regulates up to is the coastal jurisdiction limit, which is about here of 5.5. So, that's 1.3 feet lower than what the state regulation elevation is. So, with anything within that limit is in full review by the state, the permit that we went for. In perspective, coming back out to by the road, the road is about an elevation of 6.0. See, almost a two-foot elevation difference there, just within that simple span. So, when we talk about redoing the parking lot, most of the concentration is really around the vicinity of that local catch basin. And we'll give some, a graphic here that'll show you of how that would happen to flood localized during a storm event. I'm not going to steal Craig's dinner, because I know he's itching to share some.
It's my turn?
Share.
Okay. Good evening. For record, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut. I'm a senior engineer in principle with Redness and Mead, contracted through Neil Hawke Architects, working for the town of Darien and the Park and Rec Building Committee. I think the reason I'm here is really to explain the why behind the improvements that are being proposed, at least to the parking lot and the beach. I know you all know me well, for anyone that might be watching at home or watching a stream in the future, I was brought on because I, A, I work on these sorts of projects through my private company and have worked on dozens of projects that involve floodplain management and coastal engineering. But I'm also very familiar with town processes and local issues related to the beach. Served for seven years on the Environmental Protection Commission, which is also the town's Flood and Erosion Control Board, chaired the Flood Mitigation Strategy Committee, served on our Sustainability Chair of the Flood Mitigation Strategy Committee, served on our Sustainability Committee for many years, chaired, chaired that for most of them. So I come with a lens that's kind of got a hyper-focus on local issues. So the picture you see here, which you saw previously, indicates what the beach looked like after a fairly mild nor'easter on January 1st of, I forgot which year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, yeah. And the, the, the storm surge came up and pushed that west beach into the parking lot. And that catch basin that we're talking about is right in the lower corner of this picture. So that elevation four point two is right there. So more perspective on elevation four point two, Weed Beach is kind of the parking lot there is about elevation eight. So we're talking parts of the Pear Tree Beach parking lot that start four feet lower than that. So that's why you'll see flooding in the Pear Tree lot well before you might see flooding in Weed Beach lot. Kind of helpful perspective for people. It was, the achievement of getting the COP approved by the DEP really was an achievement because we really, Dan's group really had to push them out of their comfort zone to allow us to elevate the portions of the parking lot that were so low. It, it kind of, you know, they like to stay within twelve inches. That's when we started this process, don't fill by more than twelve inches. And we're filling by more than twenty-four inches at several points to try to get this parking lot out of the, out of the water, really. So that shouldn't be misstated. And the real reason they did that is for coastal resiliency, a hundred percent. And so they recognized that this is an effort in coastal resiliency. This is another way that the beaches impact. This is after the remnants of Hurricane Ida came through September of twenty twenty-one. And this actually wasn't driven by coastal storm surges, this was driven by excess rainfall. Could not fit in the pipe that discharges by the boat ramp, ended up flowing across the parking lot and came over the curb at the catch basin globally. So water flows downhill and it tore out the beach. So the improvements that are being proposed, this would not have occurred in that storm event, and this would not have occurred in that storm event if these improvements were already in place. So I'm first going to explain this spreadsheet to you, believe it or not, and then we're going to see some graphics that support the spreadsheet. So basically, elevation four point two is so low that it's actually below the normal regular lunar tide cycle. So there are high tides that are above elevation four point two. In the background, we have sea level rise. And so what each column on this chart does is look at different elevations of sea level, and I'll describe those. And this is the frequency of flooding in the parking lot. So starting at the catch basin grade, how many times per year would you anticipate flooding at the catch basin grade? How many times per year would you see at least six inches of flooding at the catch basin grade? How many times per year you would see twelve inches or eighteen inches or twenty-four inches of flooding at the catch basin grade, expanding further and further into the parking lot? So we know, just by looking at tide gauge from Bridgeport, that fifty years ago, sea level in Long Island Sound was six or seven inches lower than it is today. So this first column is actually back in time. It's not now, it's fifty years ago. So fifty years ago, you might have had an average of once a week, water bubbling up at that catch basin, and maybe once a month, about six inches of water there. Tolerable, no one really noticed. Having those once a months lined up with a busy holiday weekend or a busy weekend in the summer, maybe it didn't happen. Fast forward fifty years, this is the predicted tide cycle for 2020. This stuff is from 2020, because that's when we did all this work. So you see how this shifts. Water bubbling out of the catch basin on average every third day. Six inches of water at the catch basin on average once a week. Twelve inches of water at the catch basin on average once a month. This is what's happening today. This is not a storm event. This is just the lunar tide cycle. We actually know that even a light wind coming out of the east from Rhode Island towards New York, because of the shape of Long Island Sound, will push more water up Long Island Sound than those normal tide cycles. You'll have fifty or sixty or seventy times in a given year that the normal tide cycle has actually exceeded, just based on the direction of the wind. So in Connecticut, the Coast of Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Change looked at local issues related to sea level rise and climate change. And their recommendation has been plan for up to twenty inches of sea level rise from the tidal epic that ended in 2000 through the tidal epic that will end in 2050. So that's a planning recommendation to plan for up, up twenty inches of sea level rise. So now we project out, we know we've had some sea level rise in the last fifty years. We project out, well, what happens if we continue to get more, which we will? And so an additional six inches of sea level rise is this column right here. So now you see, you know, every day or two on average, water bubbling out of that catch basin. Every third day, six inches of water. On average, every week, twelve inches of water at that catch basin. On average, every month, eighteen inches of water. Project that out for twelve inches of sea level rise, it gets worse. This, this is not a linear relationship, right? Because of the sine curve of, of the wave cycle or the tide cycle, as you bring sea level up a little bit more, you get many more instances of flooding. So that's the chart, and it shows you how quickly what might be a tolerable nuisance will turn into loss of the parking lot on days you want to use it. An intolerable nuisance in effect. So this starts with the graphics that describe the chart. So here's Weed Beach, or here's Pear Tree Beach. This is for the baseline condition of 2020. And so this is the frequency of flooding at the catch basin, and then how much of the parking lot would be taken up. So at least once a year, there will be a high tide unrelated to storms that will fill this much of the parking lot. That's the once a year. And then you go down into the once a month and the once a week. Okay? That's what's happening today, this year. This was 2020. So let's fast forward that. We chose to fast forward that with just twelve inches of sea level rise, not the twenty-inch recommended by the planning document. And you see how quickly the frequency accelerates based on the nature of the elevations of high tide. So that's baseline year with twelve inches of sea level rise. Once a year, once a month, once a week, and now much more frequently than that. So without action, we will lose this resource. We will lose the asset that is Pear Tree Beach. So the proposal, as Dan described, is to elevate those low portions of the parking lot, pull the curb back. So now, again, you can go down there at high tide, you probably don't have room to put a towel between the curb and the, and the high tide line, and you'll actually have more room that's at a higher elevation. So you'll actually have space to enjoy that beach during high tide. Elevate the low portions of it, and instead of this edge being the low point, the low point's brought into the middle of the parking lot through a series of new catch basins. So now that won't be the low point where water runs to in excess rainfall, and it won't be a low point where water can come up from the harbor. And so what that does is this is the baseline year, zero flooding of the parking lot when the job is done. And even when we go back and add that twelve inches of sea level rise, very little flooding. You'll have a little bit of localized puddling around the new catch basins, and that's about it. So we're not only trying to correct what's happening today, we're trying to plan for the future. And that's kind of the why behind what we're proposing to do here and why we think it's important. And the new curb is what's called an erosion control structure. It's not your typical on the side of a street curb. It's got a massive foundation, so it stays in place through these events. And when we brought RACEN, the coastal engineers, one of the things that we wanted to understand was, you know, we're going to do all this work and it's just going to erode away or be damaged by significant wave action. So they did a high-level analysis to look at the wave, the likely wave approach, the likely fetch caused by primary wind direction. And I think what you know intuitively is true, it's a very protected location, deep in an inlet. And so it's protected from the highest wave propagation, which is in this section of the Compass Rose, and this is really where the waves are coming from, we're much lower. They looked at all the historic aerials and determined that, you know, the sediment deposit that is the beach has been relatively stable over the course of history, at least photographic history. And then this is a diagram of areas of the sound that see significant erosion versus significant deposition. And this is actually an area that is very stable. And if anything, it's on the accretion side or the deposition side more than it is the erosion side. So again, that was a high-level analysis, it wasn't a specific local analysis, but it was enough to say, okay, well, this is, this is a smart choice to move forward with the actions being proposed. And that was my section of the presentation.
Dan, can I just shove this up a little bit? Bring this up to the...
Sure.
Thank you, Craig. So once again, maybe before we open it up to questions, I thought it would also be helpful to just maybe talk about timing and kind of get into a little bit of a conversation about what this potentially might cost. So from a timing perspective, I think, you know, we're kind of looking at this in, I think essentially two big blocks of time. The first big block of time is actually securing, kind of doing the work upfront to secure funding, secure approvals, and ultimately identify a contractor and bring a contractor on board, no different than any other major kind of initiative, you know, that the town might go through. And that's what this is attempting to show here. So, you know, I've just kind of broken this out into a series of, you know, you can call them little mini phases here, but this all in and of itself holistically represents the work that would be required just to get to the point where we've identified a contractor and we can get a shovel in the ground. Granted, this may be a little conservative, but this is essentially, you know, an eight to nine-month process. And I'll kind of, on the next slide, you'll see why that might be significant. But, you know, this is, there's some work to be done. If you were to look at the certificate of permission, there's a tremendous amount of detail in that, but that's not enough of detail for a contractor to put together a proposal for us. So there's another step that would have to be taken to actually produce detailed construction diagrams and documents that ultimately a bidder potentially could get their arms around and give us a price on. So that's the exercise that would have to go on initially here, once we've gotten a green light that we can move forward on that. Obviously, telling you guys stuff that's, you already know, but, you know, once we've identified the pool of bidders, we'd have an invitation to bid, those are, the RFQ would go out, we'd get responses back, and as you'd imagine, there's a process that we have to follow through in ultimately culminating and negotiating a contract. So my view is typically, nothing happens in less than a month. And, you know, having kind of socialized this a bit, I think there's a general sense that this is probably not all that far off. So before getting a shovel in the ground, we're talking about nine months. And then if this line just, you know, represents what I just talked through, and if in fact we had the opportunity to do a number of these other kind of tasks in parallel, like going to planning and zoning for whatever approvals that might be required, and going through the, the funding process, that kind of positions us to, that, you know, we're out nine months now, and I think the current thinking is we're possibly in a cycle here where we're looking at maybe a nine-month construction exercise as well. So overall, with both of those major chunks, we're talking about an eighteen-month exercise. And I thought it would, once again, just be helpful here to kind of lay this out so we can get an appreciation, working backwards now from when we think at the end of construction here, and kind of, you know, starting, let's say, once again, I just laid this out into a calendar that shows calendar years, twenty-three, twenty-four, fiscal years here. If we were to start, and once again, this is purely hypothetical, but if we were to start, let's, January, that potentially positions us to kind of complete construction just in time for the beach opening in 2024. And I think what's helpful for me, at least in looking at this, is that beach season is a three or four-month beach season. If this slides out slightly, you're in the following calendar year now. So wherever you start, I think it's helpful to understand, we're talking about an eighteen-month cycle. And, and I, and I think, you know, probably the best way to look at this is to understand when you'd like to have it done and work, work backwards, if that's a possibility. So, so this is simply an exercise to answer the question, how long might this take? Recognizing, you know, work, any one of these tasks would start, could start anywhere on the calendar, but just to kind of understanding the impact of, you know, where we might end up, given, given where we start. Also chatted amongst ourselves and recognizing that the question is out there in terms of cost, we're probably in the, you know, mid-seven-figure range based upon what we currently understand here, plus or minus. And it's impossible to give you a more accurate understanding until we've really gone out for bids and, you know, had, had the opportunity to take a look at what contractors are coming back to us with. So that's, that's what we have to offer at the moment. We're open for questions. You know, it was our objective to just come in, give you guys an update on, you know, what we think is, once again, a very important milestone here in the project, and happy to feel any questions.
So Mike, this seems like this is a three-part project. So you're covering the parking lot, but we have the dredging question out there, right? And how, and the boat dock, so the boat ramp. So how are you positioning this along with those other two? And is there a sequence that has to be followed? And is this, are you suggesting that this is the first of the three to focus on?
So what this is reflecting or representing is that all of those elements that we talked through, including the boat ramp, so the boat ramp, the parking lot, essentially, those two.
Dredging.
Oh, and dredging. Dredging is a dependency. So dredging is a dependency to fix the boat ramp. So fixing the boat ramp requires that we do the dredge. So I'm not really looking at that as a separate element, it's kind of, it needs to be done. So, so what this is representing is that those, let's call it those three pieces, the dredge, the boat ramp, and the parking lot are all done essentially as part of one integral project.
Okay, and when you're looking at the dredging, are you looking at the, the full dredging? Or are you looking at a smaller portion? Are you involving the boat club?
It's a question to be answered for those who are kind of, maybe a little clarity here. So when we presented the application to Connecticut DEEP, as part of that, it was acknowledged that in order to fix the boat ramp, there'd be some dredging required at the foot of the boat ramp. Leading up to that, there was a conversation with the boat club. And it was, I guess, agreed that since we were going to be, going for an application for dredging, we expanded the area of dredging beyond what was purely required to do the boat ramp, to also incorporate what would be helpful and beneficial for the boat club as well. With the thought that, hey, look, we've got to go for approval, let's get, let's get it all in, and then ultimately when we, when it comes time to do the work, we can make a determination of whether we're doing all of it or a subset of it. So it's a question to be answered. There hasn't been any further conversation with the boat club to really evaluate what that really translates to. But maybe the simplest way to answer the question is to say... there's a large footprint that's kind of reflected in the, in the permit of dredging, only a subset of which, a very small subset of which would have to be done in order to fix the boat ramp.
Okay, so your, your number is the entire and your timeline is the entire, correct?
Yeah, this is the danger of sharing numbers. So the number is, is a number. And until we really, you know, get further in to understand what the full cost, we reckon, we also understand that there are aspects of, there are areas in the map, in the footprint of what would need to be dredged that, that we may have to treat, you know, the spoils of that a little differently than other areas in terms of where they could be deposited. And that raises a little bit of a complication and potentially some additional costs as well.
Okay, but just so I understand, you're looking at this as a complete project. You're looking at doing all three.
At least in the way that we're presenting it this evening.
Okay, all right, I'll open it up to the board.
Mike, first just to answer the phasing question about the three pieces. The dredging.
Yes, go.
Sorry, the dredging piece really needs to occur when the stocks are pulled in, right? So because there are areas where the boat club has their docks, that's part of the dredging area. And then when that material is removed, has to be de-watered before removed from the town. So you ultimately use the parking area for that. And all that should occur before improving the parking lot. And you can't build the boat ramp before doing the parking lot. Or it could happen as a parlor parking lot, you can't like say, okay, boat ramp now, dredge now, and parking lot later. It's kind of that, that process of dredge, mess up the parking lot for de-watering and hauling, then reconstruct the boat ramp and work your way into the parking lot as one site package. So that's probably the optimal phasing.
Yeah.
Systematically, and then go with the seasonal use of the slips and the water from the boater standpoint.
And would, and would the beach, talk to us about beach closing?
So if you were to say when the beach closes in Labor Day, formerly Labor Day, was when ultimately you'd want to start construction to have the dredging starting, the boat slips brought in or some equation, or simply close on the parking lot for that time period to start improvements. You could start on the south end of the parking lot for a site construction while maybe the boaters are still using the dock area for the boat club. So that logistics really would have to be worked out. Ultimately, you start after the beach season and work through the winter. And then, what do we say, twelve, nine, nine, 10 months-ish? And have opened up for the next beach season, which would be May, June.
It's a June, July.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would probably close down the whole park space per se for that construction period because there's going to be some busy operations.
Yeah. I think it'd be difficult to work around for visitors to work around that construction zone.
Right.
So that was my, my question. So this plan presumes that, or anticipates that it'll be a nine month period where there would be no access to that parking lot, no access to that area.
Yeah, yeah.
Assuming that there are no historically bad storms that interrupt the progress and/or any other unforeseen problems, everything goes well.
Yeah.
Nine months of parking lots closed.
So yes, and ideally, if it could be timed appropriately, that nine months happens when folks are otherwise not using the beach, which would be through the winter and early spring. That's kind of part of, I think, kind of the bit of the threading the needle that you're kind of referring to here.
And then my overall, like, excuse you for interrupting, then my overall other questions as well I'm asking is that, so it's your considered opinion though, that if we don't do certainly the parking lot aspect, you know, we're ultimately on target to lose the asset, as Mr. Flatter already said.
Yes.
That nuisance, right? The nuisance that toddle now turns into the annoyance and eventually to the non-use of portions of the parking lot for significant periods of time.
Yeah, I would just say maybe another way to say it is the conditions that would limit access, which are kind of limited nowadays, just become more and more frequent. So, you know, when that happens, you know, no one has that crystal ball. But, you know, I had a little bit of the aha moment by sitting with Craig back probably early in 2019 and going through, looking through, you know, NOAA tide charts and really understanding this in a way that there is a science behind it. So, you know, and there's a little bit of unpredictability, but it's, I think it's, there's also a little bit of, I would say, inevitability from what I can, what I can understand.
And I have one more question, then I'll let everybody else go. In considering these things, are there any other areas or communities along our shoreline who have similarly situated issues with their recreational space, parking areas being below? And are you talking to them, consulting with them on how they've addressed it?
I'll, I'll give an answer, but maybe if you, or Craig, and from your experience.
Yeah, so when we first approached deep about this topic, they kind of smiled and said, we haven't seen this before. Most people aren't willing to put the investment into a park space, but we realize this is the asset of the town. And so let's, let's talk about, what can this be? We have not even addressed this issue of how to rebuild parking and add more beach. And the first response was, as Craig mentioned, 12 inches, no more filled 12 inches, this whole area. And I said, really? Okay. So we basically had to go back and we negotiated with them to get to that increased fill area on to, I think, 26 inches or so, to frame for them of how much resources is for the town. And they simply, they haven't dealt this before from a permit standpoint. So realizing how valuable it is of a space and how it can be protected and preserved for future generations, they realized that this is an asset that really should be preserved and maintained and upgraded to a level that can be utilized for all these events. So deep standpoint, and I think we looked around, other municipalities have not felt at least framing process to this commission.
And I think the only phrase I would add is that this is a uniquely vulnerable property because of its low elevation.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I would simply add, as Dan's pointed out, I think it is precedent setting in terms of, you know, deep granting this permit, given what Dan's talked through. And the only other anecdotal piece that I kind of am aware of is early on in the process, I think it was Pam Gary who shared a, there was an article from Mystic Seaport that kind of reflected on the fact that Mystic Seaport, the museum area, was experiencing the same problems we were experiencing, you know, during astronomical high tides. And there were days there where, you know, the parking lot was inaccessible because of flooding. So it's, once again, it's kind of a small data point. But maybe the interesting thing that will come out of this, if we were to proceed with it, and I'm not suggesting this is the reason to, is that, you know, other municipalities may find themselves in a better position to kind of make a bid for it and move forward with it. Because as we say, it's just a tremendously valuable amenity.
Thank you, Sarah.
Couple of questions. Sitting on a building committee right now, does this timing make sense? Like if, I understand that the five million, which is a guess.
I didn't say five million.
No, well, mid-sevens.
I said mid-seven.
Mid-seven, I'm going to take five for you. So does this make sense? Like if you're, would you award a contract before, no, you would, we wait until the funding approval and everything, right? All the timing that phasing makes sense?
Well, I can't, if you go backside, I couldn't really see what the timing was, but.
You have to get town, you have to go through all the.
You're going to have to get the funding. So we're not going to hire somebody to help us write the bids back until we get the fund. So then, you know, that can take some time to do the bids specs, then we've got to put the bids out. And with a project like this, it's not a two week turnaround, you know? So yeah, I think the time would, would add up, you know? And just think about what you've gone through with architects and all.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just double checking, okay.
Yeah, by the way.
I think it might be a little bit long, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be a two month turnaround.
No, 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 okay.
And just to clarify, so what we are proposing though would be an initial tranche of funding to get us through this initial phase here, so. And that initial tranche would get us through building construction documents and kind of packaging, you know, all of that.
Yeah, no, it costs to do that.
And that's not mid-seven figures, that's kind of, you know.
And the other question I had was this, and I haven't watched meetings for this fall, so I apologize if this has been discussed. There is this portion of the parking lot, which is towards the gazebo that are the ranch, which doesn't really sit in that lower portion. Has there ever been a discussion about changing the entrance so that it remains in the higher portion? So that there's always some parking lot spots that are available or no?
Changing it.
Because right now it's in that low spot. So if we were to change to a higher spot, even though you would lose the majority of those spots, if you have these high tides, you'd still have some accessibility.
So you start to be limited by the elevation of the road itself. So the road goes by the entrance at that low elevation. So basically, we got the design up to a level that effectively matches the low point in the road. So when you start to have, you know, accessibility problems in the road, that's when the parking lot starts to.
True, okay.
And so also think about the circulation within the parking lot. So the location of the entrance actually is strategic for boat launch.
Yes, of course, right, yeah.
Right, boats come in, back to that launch and circle around. Yeah, so the further you move away from that launch, the more.
You're right, then the boots, yes, no, understood, understood.
I apologize if I just missed the boat. So the last Pear Tree, he's laughing because he knows sometimes this happens. So the last set of meetings and discussions about this were around changing out the building at the far end. And this was massively controversial, and there was a lot of public input. And a lot of this went on, and it was really bad, and all this shut down. And so now we're having a discussion about this, which I applaud, this is great, these are all improvements to be made. So what happened to that whole other discussion, and where are we on all that?
We essentially took it off the, well, I shouldn't say we. So to your point, obviously, there was a tremendous amount of controversy around that. That was a discussion that ultimately went back to the Parks and Rec Commission. And I think maybe Lori, I don't know if you would like to talk up to that a little bit? Would you like to come up maybe?
Hi, Lorraine Borre, Chair of Parks and Rec Commission. During this time period when we've been going through the approval process, the Parks and Rec Commission also took the opportunity to readdress what to do with the building. As John said, it was extraordinarily controversial. And it was a good time with everything being unpause due to COVID and different things to say, step back, and let's revisit this situation. So a separate working group was created, we just called it the Pear Tree, you know, Working Group of the Commission chaired by Cara Bone Sac. And that started, give or take, a year ago. And the culmination of that was to have a townwide survey that took place over the summer. We enlisted Noble House, which is an outside, you know, marketing consulting firm to help us because we wanted to make sure that there was clear that it was, you know, being overseen by an independent group and have that, you know, clarity around it. We got about 1,800 responses, which we were told by Noble House is was a really, really excellent response. And we got over 600 pages of written comments. And the survey wasn't, do you want the building or not the building? We really stepped back and said, what do you want at Pear Tree? You know, what do you, the community, look for? And the messaging was very, very clear. People love the beach, they want it preserved, they want to keep it simple. They don't want the other activities. They're like, we go to Weed Beach for those things, for the tennis and the paddle and the playground and the concession. The concession has not done well there. We've brought in different vendors and our vendor at Weed Beach, she does wonderfully. And at Pear Tree, the demand isn't there. People said, we want better landscaping, we want a nicer picnic area, we want clean bathrooms, and we want a beautiful, peaceful beach. It was pretty basic and simple. They weren't looking for much more. So with that information, the commission has concluded that the best option at this time is to do some cosmetic and minor work on the current bath house. It's actually, you think of it as one building, it's actually two buildings. So there's the room, the building that actually houses the toilets and the showers. To do some cosmetic work around that, and we have put some money in our next budget for that because people would like to have it be sort of the same fit and finish as the bathrooms down at Weed Beach. So make them look a little bit nicer, time and time again, so as we just want really, you know, clean bathrooms. Not, we probably won't run a snack bar, I don't think we'd find a vendor for next summer. And then over a longer period, think about, could we, with minimal expenditure, repurpose the rest of that building in some way? Could you take the kitchen area and open it up into seating or something? So that we'll have to think about a little bit more. The, the building itself is full on in a flood zone. So we are very limited in how much money we could spend there. By FEMA regulations and also just practically speaking, we have to be cautious about putting a lot of money into a building that is in a flood zone because we just don't know what's going to happen when. But we really put the building portion aside. I can't tell you whether that will prove to be a wise decision or not, only Mother Nature.
Certainly less controversial.
Yes, but at this point, you know, we do feel strongly about the importance of preserving the park itself for future generations, and we, we think that's the best place to put the money right now, given that people said, just give me a clean, decent looking bathroom.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, what's the max on FEMA for, for spending on the building?
You can spend up to 50% of the assessed value.
Do we know what that number is?
Yeah.
I think it's 90K, roughly 90K.
And you do that every, I think it's.
Three years.
It's a rolling three year.
Yeah, it's a three year look back.
Three year cycle. So it doesn't actually give us a lot of money to play with. Some things you can really consider maintenance, whether it's fresh paint or new light fixtures, wouldn't really fall under that. But see, that was the trick of the whole project, is to really do anything substantial with that building, you have to comply with FEMA, which requires the building to be lifted. So that was always the catch 22 with the project.
I think at the time, there's never been a question, the site improvements have to be done. Despite in order to preserve it, we need to do this work.
John, do you have any other questions?
We think so.
Marcy?
Sure, I'm curious about what the forecasts are on the rate of the rise in sea level. So is this something that we're looking at? If we're talking a 12 inch rise in sea level, is this something that we can forecast could sustain 50 years? 10 years, 100 years? And I know that's kind of a pie in the sky question.
Yeah, no, look, I've done a lot of reading. And I don't think I could guess at an answer, right? I point to the one document that was hyper-focused on Long Island Sound, which is that resiliency document I mentioned. They took all the studies and they churned through all the studies and all the data, and they spit out this planning recommendation to plan projects for 20 inches of sea level rise. I, I hope it's going slower, feels like maybe it's going slower. But I don't, I don't know, and I can't represent how much time we're buying. So there's, there's two points in this equation, how quickly will we start to lose more and more function? And then if we invest this money, how much time are we going to get out of that money that we're investing? But I think representing that this preserves it for some generations is a reasonable thing to say.
Thank you.
So Dana, easy question, and that is almost five year. Is that, does a project have to be completed, started? What's the?
I would say you have to show a conscious effort to enact the permit. And then we will give them updates as to what's being improved. You should make improvements that are willingly showing to good faith effort. So the Talawetland is their pretty small component, maybe the most environmental piece that they saw on their lens. I wouldn't ignore that, I think, just focus on the boat ramp. So it's the balance between the improvements. If you chose not to do all the dredging, they would be accepting to that. They, you know, you just need to know what pieces would be done first. So you need to make good conscious effort, and especially if you want to apply for an extension. I think we need to have some rational reasoning as to why it wasn't enacted over five years before they allowed an extension. So we need to have good faith effort to proceed at some point in five years.
All right, no, I got that, but.
The construction, probably not completed.
But we don't have to, okay.
Yeah.
Start, but not complete.
If we start, we can frame for them as to where we're in the process. And I think that's a conversation we can have. And we would still apply for an extension to cover the period of construction, but we'd have a definite deadline, completion date to share with them, and that would be accepted to them.
Okay, so going back, I'm still questioning the whole dredging thing, and I feel like that's a conversation that has to be had with the boat club, right? And I guess, I guess I would like to know with these components and the dredging, what is the dollar amount and the time allotted for the? what is the dollar amount and the time allotted for the minimum amount of dredging to solve the boat ramp? And then going full boat.
That was hilarious. We were Harbor Master, he's really laughing.
No, but, and then, and then doing the whole project? And how big of a component on price is the dredging?
Yeah, and just to frame that there's efficiency by doing the whole area at once versus a small pocket.
Sure.
We did have some conversations with various contractors that do this. There's different methods they could use, bring in a scowl, a barge basically, to load down and haul it off. And you don't ever see it go through town. That's one method. Another is to export it from the ground and do water on site and truck it off. Another method where you have to have it basically dry before it goes out in a mixture, a mix basically of the site. And if you have a smaller area by the boat ramp, they possibly could reach that from land and execute it. So that range is quite the range. We'll have to look back at our numbers when we had, just to gauge that. So remember, it has to go off to another site for disposal. It can't just go into, you know, the low area somewhere. It has to go to an approved site. That was part of our conditions, that we let the state know where it's going to and what the proper facility will allow this material to be accepted.
And the state wants the material for the full dredging removed?
The state is not saying the full area. It can be a portion of the area can be removed. It can be a portion of the whole dredge area.
But they're not requiring that every particle that's dredged for the full project is removed?
Oh, no, it all has to be removed.
It does all have to be, okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it all has to be disposed of. And the key factor here is, once again, there's a large footprint that's been called out in the permit for dredging. Certain aspects of the spoils that would be dredged would need to be disposed of in a particular way because of the characteristics of those spoils, which are different, which would make that more expensive and more complex. And that's different than the area that we're talking about, that would be required to be dredged just for the boat ramp.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Yeah, so our contaminated.
Trying not to use that word, but.
And I totally, totally agree with you there. But our problem area is not the boat ramp area.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And is it safe to say that it's likely that the beach will be closed, assuming that the full scope of the project is done for one season or no?
Well, once again, depending on when it's, that's what this is attempting to show. Depending on when we start, there's a possibility of kind of lining up the schedule in such a way where we're not impacting the beach season at all.
A season, okay.
So we would be doing the work during the off-season. But the only way to make that work would be essentially starting in January of the year with the process. If you follow my point.
Right, right.
The kind of upfront, pre-construction phase, let's call it. That would be, if we're roughly within the ballpark of saying that's a nine-month exercise, that would have to start within, somewhere January, February, in order to not affect the beach season fully. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work in your committee.
You know, this was a tremendous amount of work, this, but your four years has been really appreciated. Lot of work.
It's been a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, and next item on the agenda is public comment. So if anyone does have any public comment, do we have any emails or anything?
No emails.
Okay. And would anyone like to speak? Go. Please.
I'm Bill Kavers, I'm the Chair of the Coastal Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters. I've been Chair for the last couple of years, several years, and I've been on the commission for, I think I'm going on my eleventh year, so quite a bit of time. And I've just come here mainly to support the boat launch ramp, part of the project. I agree and impressed by all the work. But our focus is, as a coastal commission, is the water. And we feel it's a proper extension though of our recommendation to say, to do a project like this because it enables boaters access to the water, which is a very important component of why a lot of us on the coastal commission have chosen to live in Darien and our beautiful coastal waters and use them with our boats. Literally, the number one topic that I get asked a question about through the years I've been a commissioner has been this boat launch ramp and its difficulty of working. So at Christmas parties, on the beach, et cetera, I've, more than any other topic, had this topic brought up, the difficulty of using it. And I've personally gone down there and watched people use it in frustrated method. Because of the shallow grade, they have to either run their boats onto their trailers at speed, coming off the water onto the ramp, or put their brakes on massively to shoot the boat off, or get their axles so deep in the water that they can find deep enough water. It's dangerous, it's frustrating. I early on in the town, living in the town, I had a boat that needed launching and I found difficulty using it. It's also a little frustrating that you have people saying, well, it's worked all these years, so why do we have to fix it? They say you can come at lower tide where you can gain access to the very end of the ramp, which is a little steeper. But that's hardly the robust use you need this to work for townspeople getting access to the water. And with the wait lists expanding for use of our moorings, there's more and more boaters in town than ever before and you've got to have a way for them to get on the water. Likewise, when there's bad storms and everyone's got to exit and it's Friday evening and you don't have the right tide, that is not a good boat ramp to get everyone efficiently out. So the answer's not good that it works okay some of the time, it's got to work better. And we went down there, this is like ten years ago, because this has gone on for a while. And we actually measured the slope of the ramp and found it to be about nine, nine and a half percent. And we called Mike Payton of the CT Deep and he's part of the Boating Access, recreational boating people up there. And we asked, what do you think of that? And he said, oh, that's below grade. We would have that, if we owned that as a state, we would put that on the renovation list. And I said, so what is the right grade? And he said about twelve and a half percent. He said, but go look at the state's organization for boating access. That's the main guide that most municipalities use, he informed me. And I went to their guide and they said, not twelve and a half, but twelve to sixteen percent with the higher zone recommended. There's a long distance from nine, nine and a half percent up to sixteen percent. So this thing is way out of grade. And again, it fosters, I think, a dangerous condition and one that's not doing the right job by our towns' boaters. So I urge you to approve the good work done here and to do so as soon as possible. Thanks.
Bill, I have a question. I don't know if you're the person or maybe it's John, but so the boat ramp, is it mostly used by people dropping in and pulling out at the end of the season? Or is there a lot of weekend use by our residents?
The Harbor Master may answer that better than me, but I see a lot of weekend use. I see a lot of people going in and out.
Okay. Sure.
Oh, do we need to stand in front of the mic?
Please.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
I can't say I've done a, like, study on this.
Glad that I found yourself just for the.
I'm sorry, my name is John Keena. I'm Harbor Master for the town of Darien. As I was saying, I have not done a study on this, but there's a lot of traffic during the summertime. There are people who purchase stickers. But there are people who do use it, and I think it's been mentioned and people have said that some people manage to get their boats in before the guardhouse is occupied and boats taken out after the guardhouse is occupied. It's tough to say. You definitely see the traffic in the shoulder season and you also see the traffic during the, during the season. And you can, you can tell that by the number of trailers that you see in the parking lot at the time. So I would say, you know, it's a balance. But there are a lot of boats, specifically the Darien Boat Club, that don't arrive by trailer. Many of them are brought out by contractors that take care of the boats. Many leave by water, come back by water. So it's really difficult to say how much it's used in the capacity of in and out, you know, all the time, as far as the percentage of boaters.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, terrific presentation, thank you again.
Good night, guys, thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on mandatory referrals for improvements on various schools. So just going to give people a chance to. Adele, will you move people? Okay. Thanks, Tom. Okay, next item, Kate's going to go through this, the request for mandatory referrals on the three schools that we're working on.
So I'm going to explain it once for all three.
Perfect.
I had included with your packets the actual state statute. I think, you know, the language may be daunting, but basically, the statute says that we need to have a report from planning and zoning that says certain activities we might engage in are in accordance with the town's plan of conservation and development. So what we're asking you to do tonight is to formally make that request. I will then send a letter to Jeremy, who will put it on a planning and zoning commission, for them to say, are the improvements that we're planning to make to the three schools in accordance with the plan of conservation and development?
And we've done this with other projects?
We've done this with other things.
Okay. Okay, any questions? John, you look perplexed.
No, I just need three separate motions, right?
Yes, I, you know.
They're technically three separate projects.
They're three separate projects with the state, so I think we should do three separate motions.
Kate, do you want me to read the whole, the full motion or?
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay, so pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight twenty-four, the Board of Selectmen hereby refer to the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission for a report substantial.
Yeah, I just want to word on substantial.
On substantial improvements to Hinley Elementary School located at ten Nearwater Lane. May I have a motion to request a mandatory referral on the improvements to Hinley Elementary School? Mike moves, Sarah seconds, all in favor? Okay, terrific. Okay. Next item is pursuant to. Okay, Kate, Mike moves, Sarah seconded, and it was unanimous.
Was that Hinley?
No. Yes, Hinley, yes.
That was Hinley.
It's Hinley, yeah, we did Hinley first. Now we got Holmes.
Okay, next is pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight dash twenty-four, the Board of Selectmen hereby refer to the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission for a report on substantial improvements to Holmes Elementary School located at eighteen Hoyt Street. May I have a motion to request a mandatory referral on the improvements to Holmes Elementary School? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Terrific, unanimous. Next is pursuant to Connecticut general statutes eight twenty-four, the Board of Selectmen hereby refer to the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission for a report on substantial improvements to Royal Elementary School located at one thirty-three Mansfield. May I have a motion to request a mandatory referral on the improvements to Royal Elementary School? Sarah moves, John seconds, all in favor? Unanimous, terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is transfer. Discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to Human Resources Professional Services. And Kate, you want to take this?
Take it away. So what we're proposing to do is a study of our non-represented employees, job descriptions and wage ranges. We had originally intended to do this, put this in as a budgetary item. But when we started going around and seeking quotes from some vendors, we learned that New Canaan was doing it at this time. And there's some cost savings to us for, by hiring the same vendor that New Canaan is doing and doing some of the necessary survey work at the same time. We haven't done something like this in almost twenty years. This would, like I said, look at all the job descriptions, compare them to other towns, help us rewrite them, put them in an appropriate format. We would get wage information, I'm talking about, you know, ranges. You know, it's not going to say pay this person this amount, but it'll give us ranges for where these jobs should be placed and give us a method for evaluating positions in the future as we might add a position or as we might change the duties of a person that we could objectively evaluate what grade that job should be placed in. And that's something we haven't had. And I think it's important that we do this. And we're asking for the funds now, like I said, because we can take advantage of work, working with New Canaan to get this done. So, go ahead.
Is the impetus behind this really that we just haven't done this study and as a hygiene matter we need to? Or is there a particular problem you're trying to solve by doing this?
So the impetus, it started with when we hired our new HR director. There were several employees who came and said, you know, I think my job is not graded right. I think I, you know, the responsibilities have changed, I should be moving up in salary. And we talked about it and felt that, you know what, we haven't done this in twenty years. It's time that we have a professional come in and evaluate this, rather than doing it piecemeal, one at a time.
And that eleven-five is the total cost of that effort?
That's the, yes, that's the cost of having the study done. It's actually a little bit cushioned for expenses, you know, if they have to travel. The actual quote is a little bit less, but I rounded up for possibility of expenses.
The firm is out of Kentucky, so if she does, if the consultant works mostly, you know, online.
We won't have to pay, yeah.
But she has to travel. But Kate, so there are some savings, it's about a thousand dollar savings by working with New Canaan. What will we do if New Canaan decides not to go that route? Where will we, where will we get that? Will we have to come back for that thousand or?
For a thousand dollars, if we can find it in the right place, we don't have to come back.
Okay. And can you speak a little bit to how this, not only are we looking to compare this position with other municipalities, but how we're working internally to tell if our people are?
Well, we're, you know, right now, all the non-represented employees are in grades. We have, I think it's ten or eleven. So they are assigned to a grade which comes with a pay range. And, you know, part of it will be evaluating, you know, this position manages a budget of X millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars. What is that, you know, like, the chief of police manages a large budget. That's more responsibility than human services, which has a rather smaller budget. So what's the value of, you know, the, what value do you assign to that? How many people do they supervise? What level of autonomy do they have? What kind of regulations do they have to follow? What kind of education do they have? So it will allow us to grade all the positions appropriately and put everybody, you know, where they belong compared to their peers who are doing equal or similar level work.
So I took a pretty hard look at this. So this, the part with New Canaan, it's not a big deal, but it's a pretty intense study. And what, what, what our HR, what Susan did, Susan Barkstall did, which I really applaud her for, is first, she came up with this, this idea identified that this is something that we should, we should, you know, consider and worked with Kate on it. So I applaud her forward thinking on this and also reaching out to New Canaan and learning that they were in the same process. So if we can double up on some of this, this initial, the survey work, we will be able to save time and we will be able to save some funding. So it says in here, it's a four-month kind of project. If for some reason, and I'm confident that New Canaan will think very, very carefully about working with us, I think we're a great group to work with, myself. So we'll see what we can do there. But if, if for some reason they don't, they are already in the queue, so that would push this back a little bit. But we would like to, I personally am supportive of this and would like to get it going sooner rather than later. Any other questions? Okay. No other questions, may I have a motion to approve? Where am I here? Where am I here?
The request for transfer.
A request for a transfer of eleven thousand five hundred dollars to Human Resources Professional Services. Mike moves, John seconds, all in favor? Okay, terrific, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have some appointments. I want to say first of all, again, thank you to everybody that steps forward and donates their time and their expertise to this fantastic town because the reason this town is so fantastic is because people do step forward. So this evening, we were, had the pleasure of interviewing two people and I would like to have a, well, first was the appointment of a member to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring on November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of Terry Wood to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four? Yeah.
The agenda says November thirtieth.
Yeah, it's November.
Okay.
Okay, change that. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of Terry Wood to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for a term expiring on November thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Terrific. Our next item on the agenda is to reappoint a member to the Architectural Review Board for a term expiring on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. May I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Rebecca Morrison to the Architectural Review Board for a term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Fantastic, unanimous. Okay, I am going to table the item number eight, the reappointment of a member on alternative to, alternate, sorry, to the Architectural Review Board, we'll take that up again at the next meeting. Item number nine, reappointment of a member of the Advisory Board of Health for a term expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. May I have a motion to approve the reappointment of Joe Mochelli to the Advisory Board of Health a term expiring on June, January, I'm sorry, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three?
When we did this last meeting, we left him off the list of names.
Yes, so we're just cleaning up a little. Mike moves, John seconds, all in favor? Terrific. Next item on the agenda is minutes, review and approve the minutes of the December fifth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Do I have any edits, corrections, anything there? Okay, I had one small one. On menorah.
Yeah.
And take out, delete the check spelling.
Yeah, you have a one.
Other than that, any other edits?
Just page one, Kate.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Marcy moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Terrific. Agenda review, are there any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda?
Kate, I just was wondering if, I know we're heading into budget season, I'm curious, I know we had a lot of capital projects that we kind of approved a few years ago, we haven't done much because of either budget issues over the COVID, you know, things change, like, do anything with Ederton and that we were going to do work on, in the plus fifty-three lot over towards the train station, like, there might be some capital projects looking for some maybe updates on, just curious. Like, I know, like, the West Avenue intersection, like, I know that's finally happened, but that was like two years in the mix, like, I know there's sometimes a long lead time.
Yeah, with, with those.
Yeah.
I will take a look, I, you know, I will tell you, the Board of Finance reviews the capital projects every year during the budget season and they, we, we all have to tell them what the status is.
Okay.
And.
So it should be coming, is that right?
Yeah, but I.
I think you're going to get a lot of answers.
Yeah, but I think, you know, I'll take a look and see if there's anything sitting out there.
Or Sarah, if you have any specifics, you want to.
No, I just know that sometimes there's, there's like, you know, long lead time.
Well, there are, and, you know, and then there's some things.
Construction cost issues over the past couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we get things like, right now, we haven't been able to buy police cars.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I'll take a look.
Thanks.
Okay, if nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves, John seconds, all in favor? Terrific, thank you, thank you seventy-nine.